Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Report from November 6th, the time is 6:30 PM. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. Anyone have any changes for tonight? All right. Schedule members of public, we just have the usual Mark, the guy, and here unscheduled members of public there.
Yeah.
We will move on to number five, approve the minutes from the October 16th meeting. The only thing I noticed on page one was I should be listed as having been there.
I feel like you and I keep messing it up because we keep missing like alternate meetings. So by the time we correct it for once, it's corrected for the other day.
But actually, both of us should be listed for once. Anything else on page one that anyone noticed? I did not see anything. Anything on page two?
That must be flipping.
Anything on page three? All right, and then make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October 16th meeting as amended, so second.
Oh, second.
All those in favor of approving minutes from the October 16th meeting as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, so the minutes are approved. Then moving on to old business, the first item was to vote on the road salt supplier. So, I didn't make, shouldn't make copies of this so everybody had it at hand. The bid, we got the bid from Appalachia. And there, is everybody familiar with it or should we make copies of it?
You can just pass it around.
All right, let's just pass it around. It's basically seventy-six dollars a ton is their price. By comparison, our, the price for American rock salt was seventy-five dollars a ton. And the price from Carrville, who we had historically used, is seventy-six ninety-nine a ton. So Appalachia is ninety-nine cents a ton cheaper than the company we have been using historically, Carrville. And then I think all of the feedback that Mark, you got was very positive about Appalachia. And it sounded like a lot of people in the area are using them now.
What are your recommendations, Mark?
Well, my biggest thing that I was concentrating on with the exception of price was how do we maybe stop the, this invasion of poison parsnip plant? And so, I had heard rumors that it was coming in the salt. So I did a little bit of investigation, and it wasn't a large investigation. I went online and programmed in the poison parsnip plant origin and salt. And I could find nothing where it showed it came in the salt or from Chile, as I had heard rumored. Basically, the, this poison parsnip plant originates from Europe and Asia, and it's been here for many years. And it's related to carrots and parsnips and quite a few other root vegetables. And it, it more or less generates from unmanicured properties. So it's related to Queen Anne's Lace, which is a very similar plant look in the flower, and only it's white. So the first year after this parsnip plant grows, it just has a yellow flower. The second year, it grows taller and has a hollow stem. And so basically, we can say that it, it's not coming in the salt. Not that, to my knowledge, that I studied it, it's not a factor. So even though it's an invasive plant, the best they tell is to mow regularly before it seeds. So I think we can eliminate making our choice on which company to use as to where the salt comes from and making our decision on it. So, I know that Newfane is going with Appalachia, Wartsborough is going with Appalachia. I found out Jamaica doesn't use salt. They have, they only have a very small amount of eight miles in their town, and they just use sand for everything. Stratton is using Appalachia. And those are the ones I confirmed. You know, we've always, we've used Carrville for many years. We, we had some delayed deliveries a few years ago, but it was, I believe, due to weather in the south that they now build inventories of salt in the south to protect their roads from winter weather. And so I think now that they're aware of the volume of salt that's being used, I feel like the problem is, is becoming corrected, that there's plans for more volumes of salt in each town. So I would say price is gonna pull the big factor in, in purchase. And so that's what little input that I have. I haven't picked a certain one, I'm just hoping that with that little bit of information that the rest can give an input.
Do people have a strong feeling in one direction or another as far as, I mean, essentially three bids we have? I'll say for myself, yeah, exactly. I mean, I would prefer to save money if we can. I'm a little uncomfortable necessarily going with someone who isn't a supplier of a neighboring town. I think there's a lot to be said for knowing that other people right by us are using the same supplier, just because I think that probably gives us a little bit more security knowing that several of our towns are in the same boat. So I personally probably lean towards wanting to award it to Appalachia.
If that's the three local towns that have been using it and have been happy with the way they've been receiving it on time or within a week of when you order it?
Right, they said the deliveries are prompt, they're prompt. And in the past, they've also used Carrville and one had used American. They seem very pleased with what they're getting from Appalachia.
Where was Appalachia's salt coming from then?
It's out of New York.
So it comes from Egypt. The salt.
Was that what we were talking about, is the sun-dried?
Yeah, they have actually had, I believe that's the one that had three mines, and they also bring it imported, and yeah, with Egypt. And so therefore, it had the change in color due to exaporation, I guess is how they, they bring in the salt water into the lowlands and then close it off and let it evaporate. And then they mine the salt from the salt water.
And then where did American salt come from?
They're all pretty much based out of New York, it's just that some, some of the mines are imported from, you know, I think they, they use up the inventory in one place and then they just bring it in. So I've got it here on page.
American does specifically say that all of, that the salt they franchise is produced in the U.S.
Yeah, that's.
What produced in the U.S. necessarily, exactly what that means, they don't specifically say it's.
And which one's the most, so it's, Carrville's the most expensive?
Carrville's the most expensive, it's seventy-six ninety-nine, yeah. And American is the least expensive, it's seventy-five a ton.
And have you had any, did anyone see any notes, anyone's used them before and had an experience, that we heard anything back about them?
The ones that have used American, you know, were basically satisfied. I believe what some of the towns were doing is going by the state bid. The state takes on a bid for the state highways, and then they keep the same price for the towns, anybody that's interested. You know, just, just talking with the local road foremen and their neighbors, the two seem to favor Appalachia at this point.
And is anyone using American rock salt in there? That you know, I know you might not know all of the people.
I'm pretty sure Stratton did the year before.
But no one currently that we know, no one's, you don't know if anyone is using it this year?
And just to give a little bit of context, just as a reminder that, I mean, we estimate our usage at maybe a hundred and sixty tons. So we're talking about the difference of, you know, a hundred and sixty dollars essentially between American and, and Appalachia, and an additional one sixty-ish to Carrville, yeah.
Now, the only other real hole that I can come up with for decision-making is Carrville is based out of Colchester, Vermont. So when we call the trucking company Barrett's, they send trucks down from Colchester. And again, they've been fairly prompt with the exception of a few times that send it on air winter. And they also have a bulk supply in Rockingham, Vermont. So they'll bring a load down, if we need two loads, they'll go back and get a second one in Rockingham and come here. So they are very localized. But according to the deliveries from the other towns, their deliveries are as prompt as ours. That's the only other factor is Carrville's so close by, but according to the other road foremen, their deliveries are just these quick coming from the rest.
Sure. I guess I'd just like to say the problem, although I was not around when the shortages happened, it seems as though we can't necessarily hold that against Carrville because, you know, due to environmental factors, everyone was having a rough time.
Yeah.
And I think just, my opinion is that it's great to save money, even though it is not the largest amount of money. And I'm kind of leaning towards American because although they're not as local as Carrville, they, it seems produce or source more of their salt from the states than Appalachia. And they are also the cheapest. So looking at those two factors, that, that would be the way that I'm leaning.
Yeah, under Carrville, I have their mines listed as Cleveland, Ohio, Lansing, New York, and Avery Island, Louisiana. And then American salt, I had here that they have a mine in Troy, New York. They have one in Hampton, Corners, south of Rochester, New York. So American is like a local salt mine.
Have we had American before?
Not that I'm aware of, not within the past ten, ten to twelve years. We've basically done with Carrville. And Appalachia aren't based in New York, but their salt is imported. So like I said, probably for me.
I mean, I'm kind of also for the cheapest. I mean, you just never know what kind of winter it's gonna be, and it's only a hundred and sixty dollars until you need however many extra, you know, however much extra salt for a really bad winter. And then a hundred and sixty dollars would be nice to have not pre-spent. And if we don't know anything bad about them, and, I mean, it seems like it'd be worth price-wise giving them a shot and kind of going from there. I mean, they could really impress us, but any one of them could have an issue this winter. I mean, company probably transporting anything in the winter is bound to possibly have issues. So it seems like none of them has a black mark, you should just kind of go with the cheapest and.
Yeah. Well, I think another, well, I think Joseph had a good point too, is, is that it's not being imported, so we are staying United States type thing.
What were you gonna say, Mark?
The price you said for Appalachia that came in was seventy?
Seventy-six a ton, yeah.
And American seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
And Standard was seventy-five, seventy?
Carrville was seventy-six ninety-nine, yeah.
You know, after we get our new salt shed, we'll, we'll be able to stockpile a bigger volume of salt, whereas now we go one load at a time, just for the size of our shed. So whatever we decide for this year, it may change by being able to store a couple of loads in the future. Think that is true?
I mean, as near as I can tell, I guess it doesn't necessarily say with Carrville, although I assume both, both Appalachia and American seem to indicate that their load, their delivery loads are similar in that they're thirty to thirty-five tons when they do them.
And within what, do they give an amount of time that usually wants you going along it takes to get the load here? Is that?
Appalachia does not, in the, in the note that they sent, they did not actually indicate how quickly their delivery is. American says that normal delivery is three to five working days after we see the order.
Yeah, the guy, the road foreman in Wartsborough brought up a good point, that when we're putting certain stuff out for bid, that we should have prompt a delivery date, and if it's not delivered by that date, we have a right to choose and go anywhere else if we're in lock, like a contract. So it doesn't hold you to.
Yeah, I mean, this is all, I mean, since we didn't, we never actually put the salt out for bid.
Right.
So we never really put forward terms for anything until we just get the solicitations from these guys. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept American as our salt provider.
Is there a second?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded, yeah. Any further discussion on that? No? Okay, all those in favor of naming American rock salt as our road salt supplier for the coming season signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. So we'll just have to figure out with them what we need to do to set up our account. We can look at it later. All right. All right, moving on to six B, the Susan's Little P. Dats building windows.
And before anyone says it, autocorrect, it is mellow, not marshmallow. I already got that one down. The computer just thinks you're light and fluffy like a marshmallow.
Five years old, I thought.
I'm sure you did. And I also transcribed his phone number over wrong, so I had to update it number. So those two changes add up. It shouldn't happen all the way over.
Yeah, I gave you one, I'll understand.
But, so those two I've reflected, so if any, just to start off with changes, no matter what, obviously I've updated those.
So what's the correct number?
Four, six, seven, nine at the end? Not four, nine, second one?
Four, six.
Downtown those.
Everyone's got.
What was that?
Downtown those, your number.
But, so that I just wanted to start off with those two because they're really just technical, they're not like common I guess, so.
Even the robo-holes, oh my God. It's everywhere.
And I just picked the dates based off the fact, kind of based off the same time, similar timeline to the last bid, but obviously we're two weeks later in reviewing it. So I figured if it went out, whenever it would go out, we could give them two weeks until the Friday, and then we could review them the following meeting. So I did November twenty-second, I just picked a date a couple Fridays out. So if it went out to bid, they have a couple weeks. Or I could do the twenty-ninth, I just, I just picked a date so I have something in there, so like kind of give us something to talk about for dates.
Okay, sure, yeah.
And then, and then we'd be able to review them on December fourth. And I, I just figured that the twenty-ninth wouldn't be helpful because even though it's an extra week, it's the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, my good.
So I didn't know that even, I don't even know if you're gonna, I would assume the town, I mean, they could still drop it off, I guess, but anyway, so back to it. Those dates are not, like, I'm not attached to those dates, I just picked.
Sure. I mean, the, so the earliest we can publish it would be Saturday.
Okay.
If we, if I get it to them by noon tomorrow, it will be in the Saturday paper, which how we would, how we've historically done them is, I don't know that, I think it would probably make sense for us to have them be able to submit bids up until the next meeting, when we're actually going to open the next.
So four P.M.
Otherwise, we're setting a deadline that's kind of.
What's that timed curve?
Arbitrary.
At night of the year.
What's that timed curve on the night of the year?
I only went, I went off the template at the last stage.
It's usually up until the time of the.
Sitting in a time of what?
Six-thirty at the half, a year before six-thirty.
Somebody's bidding on something, and we can open it all that night.
Bring them.
There's a cut, we usually use.
Okay.
They come in at the meeting at six-twenty-five and hand the select board their bid.
They can do that.
So they can do that because it's up until the, just before we open them.
Yeah, we've always used seven o'clock, but you can, it's arbitrary, you can do whatever you want.
Seven, six, or seven o'clock.
Whatever we got, we got.
Sometimes we, yeah, sometimes we, we get them out of the way first.
So instead, it would say something like sealed bids, Mark, Carrville, school building windows will be received until six-thirty P.M. on December fourth, 2019. The bids will be opened with the select board at the select board meeting on December fourth, 2019.
Yeah.
And obviously, at whatever time we open it, we'd probably do it first if there were people here waiting, or we would do it later if there are.
And I think it's, yeah, I think it's fine to say that they'll be open at the select board meeting.
Okay, you don't have to say the date.
Yeah, yeah, no, with the date.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you don't have to say anymore about the time, probably. The one thing is we do need to put in it somewhere how they can submit the bids and like where to and stuff like that, so. I'm trying to just remember what we would've said for the. I mean, we would normally say that they can be submitted in writing to P.O. Box, 403.
I don't think we accepted email bids.
No, 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 we didn't do that.
Hand-delivered, we might want to specifically say email bids will not be accepted, I think sometimes we've said that. I don't know that we said that with.
Or no electronic bids, I think is what it was called, which is email.
Right.
So bids will be accepted by mail with the P.O. Box? What's the mailing address for here?
Four oh three.
Your box four oh three.
And that's Newfane?
Well, we put Brookline because we are the town of Brookline, it doesn't matter.
Okay, then.
Three, four, five is Brookline, so this way it doesn't confuse people when they see Newfane, and they're like, why is it Newfane when I'm sending it to the town of Brookline? So we do have everything as Brookline.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I did it right. Or hand-delivered to, what's this address?
Town clerk, or you can, you know, there's a mail slot here that you can drop it on.
What's the address?
Seven thirty-four Grassy Brook Road.
I'm just looking at the.
The former ones, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we may just, right, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we may just want to put this.
Contact information through the town of Brookline, I mean, the website.
Send bids to, we might, yeah, I mean, we've, we've usually just said send bids to colon town of Brookline, P.O. Box four oh three, Brookline, Vermont oh five, three, four, five, or hand-deliver to seven thirty-four to Grassy Brook Road, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so that's what I had done. Bids will be accepted by mail, P.O. Box four oh five, Brookline, Vermont oh five, three, four, five, or hand-deliver to the town clerk's office, seven thirty-four, Grassy Brook Road, and then no electronic bids will be accepted.
And it's four oh three, not four oh five?
Oh, yeah, it says four oh three. I just said four oh five.
You did.
Yeah, it's four oh three, I wrote four oh three down. Joseph, what time is it?
It appears to be.
It appears, my brain is interpreting it as a five, but it's definitely a three. Would you want to insert that after the first sentence or the second sentence of the second paragraph? Doesn't matter, I mean, I have preference.
We've usually, you mean as far as where they're supposed to send the bids?
No. Yeah, that, that, just those two sentences I just read about where the bids can be sent or delivered, where do we want to insert that in the text?
I would put them, I would put it after the first sentence in the second paragraph.
Okay.
So then, are there other, are there other things that we're changing in the first paragraph other than Bruce's name and phone number? Is there anything anybody wanted to tweak about that?
And I'll fill our first dates because that kind of gives us an out. If they don't complete it by that date, then we're free to seek a different vendor. Right, is that with the, is that why that?
They need to know that that's right.
They need, okay.
If they can, if they already.
Oh, yeah, and I'm just asking out of curiosity, okay. Yeah, no, and I kept it in there, I, I thought that's what it was, but I hadn't, obviously.
I could've told them it was number one, but I didn't think that was a good idea for obvious reasons.
Oh, I love summer.
I figured we'd pack it up a little bit. If they're gonna make us come in, that they can get it by October first.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm pretty sure that those two.
And does that wording make sense in the first sentence? That was the only thing, I kind of didn't know how to add in the, that, that it's kind of an either-or bid, so I just want to make sure everyone does read that first sentence.
Is it the Brookline Select Board or the town of Brookline?
It should be the town of Brookline.
Instead of the Brookline Select Board, it's the town of Brookline.
Yeah, we should say the town of Brookline. And there's also two of's, we should get rid of one of the of's.
Oh, yeah.
That's for preservation, order place above. That's for the preservation, order place above.
The town of Brookline. But I meant, and also for the wording, so for the accepting bids for either the preservation or replacement? Is that like, is that clear enough, do you need people to know?
Seems sensible to me.
Okay, I thought it was pretty straightforward, I wasn't gonna overcomplicate it by having too many words, but I just, if anyone else felt like it didn't make sense.
Hopefully people will get that, I would.
I hope so. But I did add two of's and call Bruce a marshmallow, so I was like, I wrote this and I really didn't provide this prior.
You don't get it right, no, it's marsha-mella. That's what I got in kindergarten, a long time ago.
I'm a good girl and a softie.
So then the second paragraph, the first sentence is gonna s.
Is gonna read.
Is gonna read, yeah.
Sealed bids marked school building windows will be received until 6:30 P. M. on December 4th, 2019.
December 4th?
Yeah.
Well, I've got November 27th.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's chickenish.
Yeah, we updated it just so we could accept them right up until the meeting. And then the inserted sentences would be bids will be accepted by mail, P. O. Box 403, Brookline Vermont 05345.
I would actually just say send bids to colon.
Send bids to. So then the inserted will be send bids to colon P. O. Box 403, Brookline Vermont 05345, or hand deliver to town clerk's office, 734 Grassy Brook Road.
I don't think you need to put it in town clerk's office or just for hand deliver to 734.
Okay, um, do I need to repeat Brookline? Yeah, that's okay, do I need to reduce, repeat Brookline Vermont, or should that be obvious by now?
No, I would repeat it.
Okay.
I don't think, yeah, yeah, I would repeat it, why not?
Okay, so inserted sentence would be sealed bids to, or send bids to colon P. O. Box 403, Brookline Vermont 05345, or hand deliver to 734 Grassy Brook Road, Brookline Vermont, no electronic bids will be accepted. And then it continues on as it reads.
And then I would, I would remove, I think the, the next sentence can just say the bids will be opened at the select board meeting.
Okay.
I don't think you need by the select board. But select board should be capitalized.
And you want, um, okay. And leave that on December 4th?
Yeah, I think so.
Just to make it clear.
Well, I'm just.
Actually. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't think we probably do either, I mean, I'm looking at, the way we've worded them in the past is we've actually not had the whole sealed bids marked. That first sentence, we would actually have probably just said send bids to, and those lines that you just wrote.
Okay.
And then say sealed bids will be opened at approximately 6:30 P. M.
Okay.
On December 4th, 2019, at a regular select board meeting.
So repeat that, so you want, instead of sealed bids marked school buildings, you, you still have to have that marked school building or windows?
That should be there because I, I open all the mail, so I just wanna make sure I don't open it.
Yeah, I mean. Okay, so.
Send bids marked school building windows, send.
Yes. Send bids marked school building windows to.
To.
P. O. Box, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
What you said before.
Is it that important to make those changes? We're basically rewriting this completely, which is fine, but I, maybe instead of rescribbling over this, we give up, is that, we just write fresh real quick.
Yeah, I mean, the, the.
Just only because there's only so much I can do with pencil before it will be impossible to figure out when I get home.
Right, and, and. Well, and we actually need to vote on it.
Yeah, so, so we could just type it up, can I just pull up my Gmail on there and then just, it'll just be easier to make sure I don't miss something either.
Yeah, I mean, the alternative is we, we end up not voting on it until next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is something we could also consider.
So you wanted to say sealed bids marked school board windows can be sent to?
Yeah.
Or send?
Send.
Okay.
Send bids marked.
Okay.
School building windows to colon P. O. Box, and then that's all the same that we were saying before.
Okay.
P. O. Box 403, Brookline.
So send sealed bids marked school building windows to the et cetera, do you wanna keep the no electronic bids will be accepted?
I actually don't think we need to have that.
Okay.
Because we've said send the bids by.
Or, or, obviously, or hand deliver. Okay.
I mean, and we haven't given anyone a address to send them to email.
So where is it being received until 6:30?
I don't know.
Yeah, so we send the sealed bids and that's through the two addresses, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're ending there and then new sentence?
New sentence.
Okay.
Sealed bids will be opened at 6:30 P. M. On December 4th, 2019, December 4, 2019, you don't need the.
Do we not want the thos', does it cost us more for each thos'?
Well, it's just not grammatically correct.
Okay.
December 4, 2019, at a regular select board meeting.
And we don't need to indicate specifically that that's the bids, like, it should just be, it's just gonna be obvious that they need to deliver them before that meeting? Or to that meeting?
Yes.
So what she's saying, you don't need to put them till 6:30 P. M.?
Okay.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because we're saying when the bids are going to be opened, so I think we, we normally assume that will understand that they have to have them to us by November.
We don't want them fixing our windows if they can't.
Just like, they can't figure that out. They can't figure that part out.
Okay, so there's a couple of changes in wording, the first one, town of Brookline and the place of Brookline Select Board, removing an of, mellow is not mellow. And then four, six, seven, nine as the, and then, so now I have send sealed bids marked school board window, um, school building windows to colon P. O. Box 403, et cetera. Um, and then it's followed by sealed bids will be opened at 6:30 P. M. on December 4, 2019, at a regular select board meeting. And the final sentence I still have is the town of Brookline reserves right to reject any and or all bids and to accept the bid deemed most favorable for the town.
Good, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Any other changes or tweaks that anyone can think of about that?
Before I write over this sentence?
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the window RFP as amended with the changes that we've discussed. Sir, second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Bruce, second stop. Any other discussion on it?
I do that one thing.
Yes.
There was discussion last time whether we wanted to spend the money regardless of which direction we take. Is that something that we are in firm agreement, that we certainly want to spend the money to preserve or replace these windows next year?
We need to know what the cost is first.
That's how I feel, I feel, I'm, I'll say for myself, I'm not sure that I've, that I want to spend the money, but until we know what of the actual best pricing would be, I don't.
For either or.
I think it's premature for myself, I'm, I, I would like to know that before I make that decision. And I personally think it's worth the no-no investment of putting out there to see what our options are more clearly.
Because the longer, the longer the building's not taken care of, the, the more disrepair it gets into, so we need to know a place to start.
Does that?
Oh, that answers my question.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll say for myself, I'm not, I, I don't feel that this is a commitment of us by, on any level to necessarily spend the money, do one or the other, or either, depending on what we get for bids.
Yeah, that last sentence kind of takes care of it.
Yes, it does. It's really the final sale, it's hard for.
I do think that as part of the ongoing conversation about this project, we do need this information to kind of like keep the, and, and have the conversation kind of either keep moving forward and progressing or come to an end, whatever, it just, I think we need more information to kind of.
Well, frankly, it has to be done, it's just a matter of when.
Right, exactly.
Well, they've got it down here, though, the work to be completed by October 1st, 2020. So, so with your information, you'll base your decision whether to go new or re.
Prepare.
Prepare. Or whether to do it.
Or not do it.
Or do it alone.
So we won't accept any bids if we decide not to do it.
Right, somebody comes in, you know, a bid comes in twenty thousand dollars, I'll figure, hey, we have the board to figure that.
I mean, is that.
No, yeah, that, I.
Comfortable with going through this process with that?
I understand. Where everyone has, I mean, that was something that had not been voiced since, since we closed the discussion.
And if I can add, it might behoove the board to consider a very quick site visit to look at the windows after we. Maybe that won't work. Yeah, because we could do it, we don't have to vote on the, on the, on the bids at that, and I would just open it up, correct?
Right.
So we could plan a site visit, look at it, plan for the next meeting after that, talk about the money and decide what, as Google wait for this? Well, throw that, because I have something to add that really is different than that, or that you ever hold on the table.
So I guess, is there any other, are there any other points to be made about the specifics of this RFP before we vote on it as with the changes we've made? Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, all those in favor of approving the RFP for the window repair or replacement with the changes that we've discussed signify by saying aye? Aye, any opposed? Any extensions?
Can I, can I?
Can I just make one point too? So here's my, the way this should work then is when you go home.
I'm just gonna do it.
Make the changes to it, send it to me, I'll just double check that I agree with changes or whatever, because then I have to, I have to send it to them to publish.
Yeah, can I share it with you as a Google document so you can just quickly make any edits if I like accidentally don't spell check mellow again?
Absolutely.
Okay, that way it's not, I won't send it to you as like a PDF or like something, it just be, I'll just share it as a Google document.
Sure, that's great, and then I can just save it out there to send to them.
Good deal.
So David, if it doesn't go in, could you tell me? Because I'm gonna notify the, the people concerned for that I can think of right off the top of my head.
Well, what I'll do is I'll, I'll send it to the woman at the reformer and then I'll, what I normally do is I send her, she prefers to get a Word document, so I send her a Word document of it and I send Guy a PDF to post on the website and I'll CC you on that and also indicate to you I've sent it.
Okay, thank you.
So, and yeah.
Now, in, in the interest of transparency, because I like to be really upfront with everything, I don't know if you want me to go into this, but I've got a spec sheet for the planning of the, if, if it goes into, well, let me put it this way, if I get people calling up in terms of repairing the windows and repairing them, I've got steps, plans already, if anybody wants to hear that, otherwise I'm going to just give them to everybody that comes, and this is the way we're gonna do it. If you'd like to know those steps, I have it written right here, there's only one real step that I'm up in the air about, but that can be solved later. But, and like I said, in interest, interest of transparency, if you're all interested in what can be done, I could even tell you after the meeting, step by step as to the way I see that the window should be done, as with the, the references I've got from the different people. And, and quality of the painting, type of the work, what steps to be done, what's gonna be done and what steps, just to make sure, like I said last meeting, I want the best possible work we can get for the best possible price, it's just that simple. So if anybody's interested in that, I could do that later, I don't have to read that off now, so, if anybody's interested in that. That's what I'm gonna tell them, is what I'm saying.
Okay, cool, any questions about that or anything else on that?
And Chris Fogarty will find out, he's a guy, the guy that I spoke about in the spring, Joseph, that was working on Dot's, actually just built a shed, and he's the one that came up with the ten thousand dollars for the Anderson, I will make sure he knows about it, I'll tell Dot to tell him. So again, in the interests of the evenness, everybody that I think I know, John Boyle out of Jamaica has, he's phoned me once, but he didn't respond back to me the next time. I'm still gonna send a voicemail through him to let him know it's going in the paper if he'd like to bid on it, and the other people that I've already spoken to.
That's great.
And when you're done with C, the road purchase update, I've got some old business I'd like to talk in there.
Okay, alright, okay, so moving on to the road equipment purchase update, it should be. Just an opportunity to touch base to see if you've been inundated with offers from people already, or?
Not exactly. We did, we did have a meeting the 30th and I actually have minutes, Guy, that I need to send in to you, it's been, I've been sitting on them. We do have another meeting planned for the 30th, at the meeting we discussed, um, really.
Just, I sent you an email a couple of days ago, the 13th is already taken, that's the planning commission that holds their meeting, so in the email I asked you to either check with them to see if they still intend to meet that day, or you'll have to change your date. Those, all those dates are up in the calendar, so you'll just have to take a look at that.
Alright, yeah, that won't, that won't be a problem for us at all, thank you, though. At the meeting, though, we just discussed how to, how to find offers, because as, as we talked about when we put the proposal together, we're gonna have to kind of seek these people out rather than the other way around, and I've called a handful of dealerships already, not too many different wheel excavators out there that fit our parameters and we did discuss who else to go after at this meeting, and I think each, myself, Mark, Archie, and Doug all have like two or three people to call, so I expect after we meet next, we'll have at least a couple firm offers. That's the hope, but, yeah.
You can't, you can only control so much, so.
Yeah, and, and as we've, as we've really known since the get-go, it's a relatively specific machine, so we'll just see how, how it turns out.
Or you guys meet, okay, we'll, we'll just.
We do meet in here.
Okay, Bruce, did you wanna?
Yeah, I'll try not to go too, I'd like to go too fast, but I won't go too fast, so like, when do we have a, the first, I have a question for Guy. On October 10th, I went to the church meeting and I, and I remembered, I looked it up today in the meeting, in the minutes, that there was discussion about turning the water off, did Leon, Leanne ever call you?
No.
No, well, okay, and saying that, yesterday I had several things going on at Suzie's, and the first thing was that Olivia emailed me and said the warning about this envelope bankruptcy of the water system, which is normal, you know, after a while they need to be clean and so on, so I went over there doing amongst other things, turned it off, called Scott over there and said, ready to go, Scott, Scott called, Scott called me back and said, I haven't heard about turning the water off at the church. And that's, I immediately told him, turn it off, turn the water off, we don't need any frozen ice, so we did that. And that's why I referred to the agenda, because I knew. And that's why I referred to the agenda, because I knew, I thought it'd come up when I had been at the church meeting, it was never taken care of. Another one of my issues for I wish I had a building issue, but anyway, moving forward. Several other things. Tom Bloom has gone there and cleaned up all of this, and he's also, he's also trimmed some of the trees over, jungle vines over the play area.
Oh, yeah.
Because there was a complaint from the state that the boughs were a little too close, so we, I had a little, the tang was perfect. Got everything cleaned up and that's all done. Which leads me to this weekend, we're still on for trying to clean up the mess this Saturday. I'm trying, I would really like to have eight, eight or nine people, we could do it in two hours, and I think I'm gonna set
Nine minutes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I think I'm gonna set the time to 10 because of the coldness.
Yeah, it's probably good idea.
Nine's a little cold, a little much. And so I'll have a fair amount of equipment, claws and stuff. It's not hard, it's not hard work. It should go very quickly, bags and gloves. Because when I stand there, some diapers in the mess and I don't think anybody will hand it to you.
Yeah.
So I'm looking to, I'd like to get eight to 10 people. I mentioned to Pat Millgate, I asked Dan, but I'm also gonna put it on, ask Julie to run it. I'd like 15 people to show up and say, we're good.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And I'm also gonna put on the front page, a front porch form to, to say we could use some help, it's not a big deal. If you can spare two hours, that's all we're asking. We can clean this mess up that the bears made for Suzie's little peanuts, and as a town, we'd like to help them out, so take a look at that line. Okay. So like I said, Tom Bloom cleaned up the trees, Scott Bobat's taking care of the plumbing. We got the thing this weekend, and my good, my hero, the blessing, days a less go. We should be done probably within the next two weeks, everything on the outside of the building, he has completed the door, you know, that I told you last time. And the rock over the tent window that we're having projected, having to replacing, the painting, it didn't take a huge amount of time to get this ladder up there and discover some rock and get rid of it. I think that's about it. I think so. I am gonna notify Suzie's assistant, who does the painting there as a part of the, as a part of the RFP. And because, A, he's competitive, if he can convince me, convince us, that he can do the work this way and do it efficiently and cheaper, we gotta know that. So anybody that's interested, I'm gonna throw that in. I guess that's it.
While we're discussing that building, though, can we discuss, and I totally forgot to follow up more about this, but Sarah asked me about this again yesterday, the invoice that we got from Al Jeffers?
Yes.
For $180.
Oh, yes. That's a story.
She still has not, she hasn't paid it because she's not sure yet
Bill come in today, yes.
if we're supposed to pay it, and I don't know what it.
The board needs to know what happened with that. I don't like the idea of just going out paying bills that are unsupported by the select board. Unless I know, WW gotta get some crown bowling for the building, that's finite stuff, we know, we need that, that's definite. But what happened in this case is this. It was a coincidence I went over there at nine o'clock in the morning on the day of that, that was done. It was 65 degrees out. They closed the building due to lack of heat. And what happened was the outside sensor had kicked off the thermostat and prevented the thermostat from then increasing the temperature. Suzie wasn't around, she was gone for a week, Olivia wasn't there, it was just running a show and the old side to take the day off. And it's why they, and the thing, this is the kicker from their side. They have to close if the temperature is not at a certain temperature in the building. And they called Jeffers, comes in, turns the dial, walks away, gets this $180 bill.
So what exactly did he do? No, but what did he actually?
From what I understand it, they turned the dial outside or something to make it so that wouldn't trip off the inside of the thermostat, so they were able to use the thermostat again and war, because the outside sensor, when it's too warm out, will prevent the thermostat from being increased. It's the way I understand it.
So Jeffers had, so did they?
So they called Jeffers.
But didn't he have to do some research before he figured out that's what the problem was? Is that why the bill was $180?
What we need to do research for, when I understand.
Well, he couldn't just look at the building and say what's wrong. Didn't he have to spend some time to find out what the problem was?
I don't think he spent any time.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I came over, came over, looked at the problem, turned up the dial, left his $180 bill. So Guy and I talked about it at great length after it happened, and we were both thinking that, you know, we gave them the names of contractors to come over in case of an emergency. That's why we didn't pay the bill, because I wanted to discuss it, you all, as to whether you think that constitute as an emergency. And I had a problem with it, you know, I'm pretty liberal as far as letting them do things like that, but I thought that was kind of, kind of shabby.
So instead of them calling there, they should have called
You? Well, the original agreement with Tina was, and it's transferred, is if there's an emergency, pipe loan or whatever, call Jeffers first, let them notify. It just so happened, I was there at 9:15 that morning, they already left. There was no emergency, it wasn't even cold in that building, and they had all taken off, they wanted the freaking day off.
Shouldn't this be the responsibility of the school?
That's
If they didn't get?
That's for five people on this board to determine, it wasn't for Bruce Mello to determine, to say yes or no to, to pay that bill or not, so that's why.
So how do you handle that?
Well, Guy and I talked about it and we both had a week, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we send them the bill and make them best of for it and make a little bit of a back and forth about it, and I think it comes down to, they have to understand.
What emergency means.
Yeah, and they can't just go ahead and call contractors because they want the day off. And, and I'm not being unfair here, they took the day off. They sent everybody home, even though Jeffers was coming there to straighten the problem out. Oh, well, we can't open now because the temperature is not up to snuff. So they closed everything, and Jeffers was there before, was gone before I got there, I think. Joseph?
Did Jeffers show up while they were there, or did they say, we can't open today, everyone go home and call Jeffers on their way out?
I don't know.
Cause I think that is, that is a bit of a distinction that would be good to know, you know? I mean, and, and I agree 100% with you.
I know you.
If it's 65 out, like what's going on?
It was 65 degrees, and I'm making it up.
But, but legally, there very well may be
Yeah, right.
legal occasions to it, you know?
You mean like infants in the building?
Like, exactly, what if it, you know, it was, you know, it was, they left early in the morning, so clearly it was colder at night, it might have been 58 degrees in there, so and, and I agree, like, we're from Hunter, suck it up, but legally, there's, there's
No, flatter.
And so they very well may be in the right, in essence.
Okay, so.
Would, so say they had waited, say they had tucked it out, whatever, say they called you, you went there, would you have been able to fix it, or would you still have needed to call Jeffers to come and adjust the thing outside in order for it not to keep tripping?
I couldn't have done it.
So you couldn't have done it, so either way, Jeffers would have been called, would have come to fix this problem.
It wasn't a problem.
But, no, but it tripping and not having, having issues with the heat for their business seems to be a problem. For them to operate in the heat space, they need to maintain a certain temperature, unless they're just, they're gonna say that to that.
To be fair with them, by state law, they have to have.
Yes, so by state law, they have a certain temperature.
And being a labor person, you wouldn't be able to look at and just say, well, it's the thermostat. You have to know how that system works.
Correct.
So they had to call somebody that knew the system.
Okay, okay. There's a solution to this. I'm not, I'm not being picky over 100% bucks, I'm just trying to keep the relationship.
So they don't do it again.
Yeah, so I think maybe in this, hearing everybody out, maybe we should do it this way, pay the bill. And I talked about it, okay, and say, look, everybody took off that day, air all this out with them, with Suzie, I have a great relationship with Suzie. Air it all out, and say, look, you guys gotta be a little bit more reasonable about this kind of stuff. If you have an emergency, we understand an emergency, but was this really an emergency, and take him to task on it. Rather than maybe the going approach that you and I talked about, Guy, which is refuse the bill, send it to that, create a lot of discord. Maybe this is a happier way of resolving.
Then the next time you need, need somebody, Al Jeffers is going to say, uh-uh.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've already.
Well, I'm not saying we're not paying the bill.
Right.
We're trying to force them to pay it.
Right.
That's, that's my thing.
Right.
What do you think, David?
I, I think that, I think that makes sense, because I, I don't, I don't know that we really have a clear ability to say we're not gonna pay this, but we also don't want it to just become something that continues to irritate us, so.
Yeah.
I, I think we pay it and like you say, you talk to them and just express
In the future, blah, blah, blah.
We please try to avoid
We have to, especially with the bear incident and the way that got out of hand, and the stairs incident, and how that got out of hand, and now this has, this relationship has to come under it. That's, that's my view. So I will work on that, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
It's not a doubt super punishment here, they just need to understand that we're watching and that we don't appreciate when they do stuff like this.
Yes.
And so we're in agreement, I'm gonna let Sarah know, she can go ahead and give some of this now, so that Al doesn't continue to wait for this, because
Yeah.
we don't want him to be the one punished for this. Okay, thanks, I just forgot about that. Okay, moving on to new business.
One tiny thing on new business, and it's really tiny. It was just something that was brought forth to me by two people that complained that they cannot, this new business, cannot hear us speak over the, unlike, over the tape.
There's two people that watch this in their free time?
You stopped it.
Who are you?
This is the same with the.
Who are you watching this?
So I'm just saying, there are people that have a hard time hearing us over the tape, that's the whole thing. Maybe you want to move closer, I don't know.
Um, you know, I, when I bring it to the studio, we listen to the audio, I'm looking at the audio here, that's why we're the headset, and I see the audio is pegging out, so that means that there's plenty of sound coming into the microphone. I don't know if it's an issue with those two people or what, but I've never heard, I listened to
Yeah.
I've reviewed a couple of tapes at times, and the audio seemed, seemed fine to me.
I've never had a problem listening to it.
Yeah.
But I will, I will monitor it even more closely, but
I just want to bring it to your attention there.
One of the reasons I wear this is I'm watching the, the sound, and I'm watching it where it pegs out, meaning it's almost too loud. So I don't know if it's our issue, but by the same token, I will ask them up at the studio, if you knew what tape it was, we could review that tape and see if there was an audio problem at the.
That would have been the last one. It would have been the 16th?
Yeah, October 16th was the last.
Okay, I'll listen to it and see.
Yeah, I don't know if it's right or not. I don't know, I watch some of that too, I ain't having.
Good to know.
A bit of it too.
Okay, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay. Alright, so moving on to the budget discussion, so what I'd like to suggest is that we give ourselves possibly no more than half an hour, if that,
A setup kind of?
to walk through, to begin to walk through the worksheets, and there are copies of the worksheet up here for Guy and Mark, I think.
Okay.
So just to lay out my vision of how we're gonna get through all of this is, I think we, I would suggest we start to go line by line through it and have brief discussion about items that we have information about. Some of them we won't really have information about, and we can skip past them. We can fill in some numbers if we have strong feelings at this point about some of them. We're gonna do this again at the November 20th meeting, Sarah is going to come to the November 20th meeting. Based on how far we've gotten at that point, I think we are probably going to want to have a special meeting to just focus on finalizing numbers. We'll see, maybe we can get through it and not need to do that. Last year, we didn't need to have a special meeting, two years ago, we did. Kind of depends on how quickly we get through things and how much discussion and debate there might be about anything.
Well, we don't have any major changes at this point yet, like Newbrook coming in asking for $20,000 bucks or something fancy. At this point, correct? Nothing strange.
So with the goal being that, you know, by the beginning of December, we've got this all nailed down. So that we're not struggling to finalize things, because ultimately, we will be voting on the final amount and all of the articles at the beginning of January. So that's how I envision this sort of working. Okay, so I already had, so the other thing I'll add.
Dave, that's quick. Didn't, didn't we have an extra meeting last year to do?
We did.
I think we had a, one meeting dedicated to, no?
No, we didn't last year.
No, one year before?
Two years ago.
Oh, okay.
Two months ago, we did it.
If we're getting this done before Christmas, we're, we're, we're doing great.
Yeah, I mean, we really
That's really good.
Because the, because of the forming of the articles and stuff, I, I think we really, we have always, the last few years anyway, we've gotten all of the budget stuff nailed down before Christmas, definitely. There's the, there's the other articles in addition to the strictly taxed ones that we then have to deal with of if we're doing an article about the road equipment purchase and what exactly that is. We now know that we have to warn as part of our article, the Brookline representative to the new school district, there's all of that, but the, the number that boils down for the tax number is all predicated on getting this done, and we've normally gotten that done by mid-December. Okay, so looking at the worksheet, sorry, and I was gonna add a separate thing, which is, I've given everybody copies of where we stand at the moment. As of yesterday for appropriation requests, but we know that we already have some more appropriation requests. My suggestion is going to be that we don't even look at the appropriations tonight.
Cause you have that.
We wait until the 20th, because a lot, a lot more will have come in at that point.
We've got a cutoff date, right?
In theory, the cutoff date for them to get them in was the end of October.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So we should have everything at this point, hopefully. But everyone has a copy of this just to know sort of what we've got at this point.
Sarah, she'll have that updated?
Yes, yeah, she will update that, that appropriations before. Okay, so starting at the top for the on the worksheet, so revenue wise, so first page, first page is basically projections of revenues. Taxes.
That's, that's basically, yeah, we can write, go right past that because it doesn't make any sense at all to even think about what the tax revenue is gonna be.
Right. Cause ultimately, that's a number that gets driven.
The state's gonna do it and.
Other things, yeah. And then the tax revenue for appropriations is also something that is predicated on where we, somewhat impacted by where we end up as far as appropriations, so we'll skip over that as well. Delinquent taxes, we've not usually
Right, because basically
projected anything, because.
Right, for the simple reason that they are accounts receivable, that's money owed to the town anyway, so you can't count that as income.
Right, so we never do anything for that. Penalties, and just to make sure everybody sort of understands the worksheet, I mean, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but the leftmost column is what we adopted as the budget essentially two years ago. The fiscal year before last. The next column, fiscal year 2019, actuals, these are the actuals through the end of the last fiscal year, so that's for the fiscal year that ended last June 30th. So those numbers are very solid and complete. And then the third column is the variance for that fiscal year, whether we are above or below what we had budgeted. Then the next column is what we budgeted for the fiscal year that we are currently in. In some of the columns, not many at this point, there might be something in the next column, which actually should say FY '20, that it's not FY '19. In a few cases. actually should say FY '20, that it's not FY '19. In a few cases, Sarah has filled in some numbers of a projection of maybe where we, a guesstimate on where we might end up for the current fiscal year, but since we're going to be doing all of this before getting halfway through the current fiscal year, it's all a bit of guesswork. So really, the usable, the most usable numbers, like we talked about before, are the actuals from FY '2019, because that's something that we have all the numbers for. And then the FY '2020 is just our ability to plug in our numbers, which we will ultimately use. Okay, sorry, I shouldn't have said that first. So moving down to penalties, it looks like a couple of years ago, we had budgeted that we might get $1,000 in penalties, but we ended up with $1,500, a little over $1,500. So last year, we budgeted $1,500.
Basically, that's predicated on the delinquent taxes. The penalties are at 8% of, when someone doesn't pay their taxes by the fourth payment, which is May 15th, the next day, they are assessed an 8% penalty. And last year, we had $23,500 in penalties, so that's where that number comes from. And it's really, it's a crapshoot, because you never know what's going to happen, but people have been paying their taxes, because they realize that, you know, they're being asked to fulfill their obligations in a nice way. So, you know, like I say, it's arbitrary, and, you know, $1,500 seems to be where we are, but-
I'm going to propose for the moment that we pencil in $1,500 and we'll have more of a discussion about it, but interest on taxes, we bumped it up slightly last year over what it had been previously, because it seemed like we were running on the high side.
And again, that's another thing, that's based upon each quarter. If you don't pay taxes on your first quarter, the first month is 1%, and three months is 1.5%. And each quarter is like that, and you know, it goes on to the year. So the interest, you know, I think the $1,100 is a pretty solid figure, but again, it just depends on what people do when they pay taxes.
Correct. I'm going to, again, suggest for the moment that we pencil in $1,100 like we did last year, and we can think more about that as it goes on. Current use, hold harmless payments?
That's basically for people who are in the current use program, and basically, the state pays us to pick up the difference, you know, a small part of the difference. Normally, the property that might be worth $3,000 or $10,000 an acre is assessed at $125 an acre, so the state gives us money back to offset it. Isn't everything, because basically, we're losing, we had, I think, in current use, almost $3 million. So if you take current use and multiply that by the 1.2.23 or 1.77, you can figure that, you know, this is what the state is giving us. It's still not what we're entitled to, but it's something the state, so that's a pretty good jump. I mean, $13,000 is what the state gave us last year. So I think $13,000 is a pretty solid figure.
Okay. State per parcel payments, looks like we pretty much stuck at-
We get a dollar a parcel.
300.
Yeah, we have 336 parcels, and the state usually gives us about a buck. So that's, 300 is pretty solid.
USDA Forest Service revenue sharing?
Okay, that's a parcel of land that's up on top of Putney Mountain. It's owned by the United States Forestry. It's Silvio DeConte's little parcel, and basically, what the Forest Service does during the course of the year, they take all the income that they receive from all the state parks and divide it among all the people and have little parcels of land. So basically, we get $100, you know, somewhere between $100, $200. So again, $100, I think, is a fair thing.
Civil fines, we have not normally budgeted anything.
No, I wondered about that, because when we do the dog licensing, we charge $50 extra. Is that considered a civil fine, or is that a, well, civil fines is basically, I don't know yet.
Yeah, I think civil fines, I don't know if license, dog license, I think it may be like when we would, I'm trying to think of even an example of something where we would have-
Well, I think like a dog license, when we took them to court and we, you know, they were in violation of certain things, we issued them a ticket because they had to go to court. Yeah, so that must be where the civil fines are.
In any event, it's not something we would budget for, because knowing whether we would ever have any of it. State payment, homestead, also something we don't budget for.
No, we don't.
A couple of years ago, we might have gotten something. What is that?
I'm not sure if that's a state payment for homestead penalties or, I'm not sure what that is, to be honest with you.
What's ERR?
Not sure.
Same thing with the Western Education Grants, I'm not sure.
What?
ERR is what a spreadsheet prints when it can't figure something out.
Oh, okay, all right, that makes sense.
What is it?
The spreadsheet thought it was an error, so that's what the ERR is, because they couldn't figure it out.
Well, that's something we'll ask-
Yeah, I think you could put a question mark there for that.
Because actually, looking at the, looking at the current year-to-date, it looks like we might have $7,400 in that. The actual says 7,465.75.
That's the state payment homestead thing?
Well, is that the, is that the amount of money when someone files a adjusted tax bill for, you know, on the state payment on your taxes? It says gross tax, then it says state payment, and then the actual amount that the person pays. I'm putting a question mark, but that's-
Something we can look at. Clerk fees, the recording, or percentage of the recording are fees.
Right, and that?
We reduced those to $3,500 in the last budget.
Okay, but clerk fees have gone up. They went from $10 a page to $15 a page, and now instead of $2 per page, we have to split $4 per page toward the restoration fund. So I'd have to really count to see what we've done, because as of July 1st, that's when that new increase kicked in. So those numbers are going to be a little changed this year. I would like to put a question mark there until I get a little more better handle on it.
For what it's worth, so far year-to-date, we seem to be at, from when this was run, we seem to be at 1,700, so a little below 50% of-
And what year, what period is that?
That's for, that's the current, that's the current fiscal year through, this is based on the reports that you did-
Okay.
-two weeks ago.
$1.500.
Of the current year, the current fiscal year, for some of the accounts.
Basically, we record about 600 pages a year. So if you take 600 and times that by we used to do at 10, it was $6,000. But now it's at 15, so that's going to make it $9,000. Out of that, $4 per page now has to be put in restoration. So the 80%, I think that has to be changed.
So wait, how much do we charge?
$10 a page.
No, now it's 15.
Now it's 15.
$15 a page, and what do we have to give, what do we have to put for?
$4. So we, the town keeps $11, and the other $4 goes into a restoration fund, which the town, the town has.
Right, so we've gone down to more like 73% rather than 80%.
Right.
So, yeah, we'll have to think.
We're still going down to $3,500.
No, I would just put a question mark there, because that says to be revisited.
I'm assuming that's linked to the records restoration, that's why it says 20% there.
Right, basically, 80%.
Yeah, right, so it, right.
In this particular case, it was $10 a page.
Yeah, it's a different percent.
8%, we kept and 10% went into restoration. I'm sorry, 20%.
Okay, all right, so we'll think about how to calculate that.
Dog license fees and fines. We've, we have 126 dogs that we've registered this year. We keep $5 per dog, so five times that is, I guess, close to $600.
Yep.
Is it, just off the top of my head, I'm just guessing. So that would be, we could change that to-
We might want to consider going up to 600.
Yeah.
Fishing hunting licenses, we've not-
Almost none exist anymore. Everybody does everything online.
Do we keep the money if it's done here? How much money would we keep if it was-
$1.50.
We get $1.50 per license. If we sell a hunting license for, I don't know, $22, we only get a dollar, $1.50 each license that we sell.
Do people know that?
Oh, yeah.
They do? If people buy the licenses, know that they, that money would go back to their town if they bought it here?
Yeah.
I don't think people-
Most hunters know that.
Most, they can do it online now, so they don't have to-
It's been that way for, you know, 100 years. It's been like that. The town always got a minuscule amount, but we did a lot of paperwork.
Yeah.
But it was a convenience for the people who lived in town, who would call me at 9:00 Saturday night and say, "Guy, I don't have a license, and I'm going hunting tomorrow morning."
And I'm sending the police in.
Oh, yes.
Copies, we've tended to stick at $900.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
We haven't changed the price or anything.
Not really.
Okay, suggest we stick with that. Marriages and civil unions, we-
Three or four a year, the town keeps $10, so $30, $40, yeah. So thirds seems right.
Birth and death certificates, we don't normally do-
Again, that's changed, too, because now the state does everything online as of July 1st, but we still keep the $10 for the certified copies. And right now, people have the opportunity, the option, to do it themselves online. They can just call in and they'll fill out a form and so forth and do that, but so that, you know, that's hard to-
I would say, we haven't budgeted it before.
We haven't normally budgeted it, but I mean, it's, yeah.
Basically, unfortunately, you know, when someone passes away, a lot of the funeral paros will ask for five or six certified copies that they need to have to different agencies to support the death of a person, but-
The records restoration revenues, like we talked about-
Yeah, that we'll have to revisit.
We'll have to revisit the percentages based on the change to the fees. Animal impound revenues, we don't normally budget anything for that. Other income, transfer-
I don't know what that is.
Not sure what that is. See if there's anything in it at the moment for this year. There is nothing in it so far this year. It's not something we budget for normally. Reimbursements?
Basically, that's when we have to have a vote in Australian ballot, two of us have to be here from 9:00 in the morning till at least 7:00, and basically, it's a 14-hour day for us. And we said that the town should not have to pay for that, and the school district should pay for it. So we send them a bill and they reimburse us for the hours.
So we will have made a killing off of that.
Well, last year, we had four, I think, four Artisan, I mean, Australian ballots. Yeah, and it's, you know, it's 14, 15 hours, you know, not counting the setup time and breakdown time, and then to have, you know, 30 or 40 people show up.
But that's going to the person working, that doesn't go to the town.
No, we get paid, but the school district reimburses us.
Oh, okay.
Reimburses the town, which is-
It washes out.
And that's why we have to have so many budget votes, because we have to increase the budget to pay for the Australian ballot.
Yeah.
If this year was 80%.
Not much.
Should have thought of that by its turn.
FD loan amount, again, something we don't budget for, but I have no idea what it is.
I mean, I think that's the bond. Is that the interest on the bond?
Maybe. Yeah, on the actual account sheet, it says loan payment. It says FD for loan payment. There's nothing, there's no revenue for it at this point, for this fiscal year. For last-
Well, I think you need a clarification of that.
The last fiscal year was 11, yeah, 11.67, yeah, so it's a question of who the loan might be. In any event, it's not something that has had a budget, budgeted amount attached to it before. And refunds miscellaneous other revenue is also something we've, understandably, not. And at the moment, we seem to have $2.14. So we're off to a booming start on that. Okay, I would like to, oh, I guess there's one more line on revenues, which is invest, interest on investments.
Yes, the money market.
Money market account, which we historically budgeted $10 to come into that, which would suggest we-
So we'll put a 10 there, so it's like-
Okay. I would suggest that we stop for the evening and we pick up on the 20th with the expenditures.
And Sarah will be here, right?
No, I didn't, and Sarah will be here.
So that'll be helpful.
Yeah. Right.
By the way, that summary of compensation that's paid to different folks, all right, Dave?
No, I was going to say, so we got a new physical copy of the state compensation and benefits report that we were talking about last time. There's a physical copy of it out in the vestibule. There's only one. There's also, Sarah just sent me the link to the new electronic copy of it.
Oh.
So I'll circulate that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
My recollection, I'm going to make sure that we, my recollection last time is that none of us could download it for a while, but I haven't, she just sent it to me. I haven't tried to download it yet, but there's also an electronic copy of it.
What's called, what, compensation?
It's the VLCT compensation and benefits report.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they poll all of the towns and based on whatever towns respond to them, they put it together of like who's what company, yeah. Okay, all right. So moving on to number eight, Guy, your town poll report.
Well, it's just, you know, normal, normal business. We did get a request from the school district to add to the article for the town meeting, again, trying to get a jump on it. I've circulated that to you, I sent you it.
Yeah, I printed out the email of it also.
And-
Was that the sassy one?
Pardon me?
Was that the sassy one?
And basically, you know, we're just busy. There's been a lot of property transfers in town, a lot of investigating title searches and so forth, so that's kept us pretty busy. We're now approaching the tax due date, which is the 15th of November, and the town office will be open from 9 until 6, and a lot of people are calling, trying to find out, you know, what their latest and greatest taxes are.
And YB, I finished book 23.
Yes, and Gwen is finally, it's a long haul, but she has finished with book 23. So we've done from 37 going forward, going backward to 23. So we still have 23 books, 22 books to do. When we get down to book two, three, four, five, six, those pages cannot be taken out, and that's when we will have to call in some other company.
I think that was book 14.
Well, whatever, yeah. Well, whatever, yeah, whatever it is.
I can't take.
At that point, we'll have to have someone come in and do it. But we've saved a great deal of money by Gwen doing these scanning. She spends two hours, sometimes once a week, sometimes, you know, in a pay period, uh, twice in a pay period. But it's tedious work, and she's gotta be careful, because she's got this grantee, grantor, she's gotta go in front of the book and make sure that all that stuff is in there, because none of this stuff has been entered in the NEMRIC program. So we don't wanna make a mistake with the grantee or grantor or who the person was. So we've been careful with that, and that's moving, uh, but basically, that's pretty much where we are in town.
Cool, awesome.
Mark, what's going on with you?
Well, I had made a note here to check with the board. The past couple of years, we've rented, uh, the over rail mowing from Fairfield's to do our own mowing, and, um, I just wanted to check with the board and see if you wanna do the same thing again for the upcoming summer. We've been trying to mow, um, last week of June or the first week of July. And so I just wondered if the board's in favor of doing the same type of rental in the same company to do our, our mowing.
What do we, um, this is so that you can reserve the.
Yeah, yeah, basically, it's, it's like first come, first served, so the calendar is open this time of year, but quickly fills in.
I guess what, what happens if we end up deciding to buy a.
I guess that if we decide to buy, I can call and cancel.
There's no deposit or anything that we refuse?
No, there's no deposit, it's just a calendar and paperwork. I can verify if you, if you wanna lock in a, a date, I can find out more about, you know, if we decide to cancel it.
Yeah, I guess it's, I, I was more thinking, not even necessarily if there was any kind, it was more just from a, you know, being considerate of them and not potentially blocking off time affairs that we might not end up taking, although we might, I mean, we have no way of knowing whether we'll find some.
Is, is the price still gonna be thirty-two hundred dollars for the?
I have not made a call, but I'm assuming that it's gonna be very near to thirty-two hundred dollars for a one-week rental.
So would they be okay with us canceling out on March, if we get an approval on these equipment and we're gonna buy it?
Right, I suppose.
I think that's a good point, and if we do cancel, it will not be a week prior, it'll be a.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's not, it's not, it's not. I can talk to them and find out.
Maybe just feel them out with it.
Notice the.
Yeah, right, and as long as that's not, then it seems sensible to me to try to block the time off.
All right, I just feel like if we don't call soon, it's gonna be pushed through the summer, and we used to not, we would get mowed until, you know, late September, October, by then, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Do you mow this year?
Yeah, we do, we mow in the second week of July.
I mean, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
I'll make the call in at the next meeting, I can fill you in on the price for rental and, you know, how much you guys notice. We would need to cancel.
Cool.
All right, and then, uh, since we last met, uh, I think going around town, we did some more sign work in the past couple of weeks. Did a little cold patch on some potholes, been scraping some roads, applying new gravel. Had numerous trees come down and a brush removal. We had the, the storm, uh, Friday there, the windstorm, and I don't know, everybody lost power, but.
Oh, God, don't start that.
That was a full day of removing limbs and trees from the roads, and some of them pinned the power lines, so we had to set up detours and close roads until the power company came and repaired, took the tree out. So because of that, there is a few places I need to get back to to move the debris out of the right of way for snow plowing, and try to get that done this week before the snow. They're saying we may have some flurries in the air, possible. We also, uh, had a meeting with Wyndham Regional. Dave was included in the meeting. We met with Jeff Nugent from Wyndham Regional Commission to talk about, um, some future grants that, uh, we have used in the past and, um, and we're making plans for, uh, the spring of twenty-twenty. We have till the end of June to use these grants. So the one grant, the MRGP grant, is the Clean Water Act. This guy Jeff is a map builder, and they've gone around our entire town and mapped all of the road segments that running water gets into a moving stream river or brook. And so we pick our worst segments first and do the stone line ditch work to slow the water down. Or we, if it's slow, we can use vegetation to, to complete this grant. So we talked about that and the areas that I recommended, and we're, we're not really locked in. If we do it, we can get our grant money for the project. If we don't get to it, there's no, um, it, it, it just doesn't happen. So we can, we can go on to the next year. And we also talked about the Better Back Road Grant, which we've used, and, um, we're also gonna try to do a project to use up the Better Back Road Grant. And, um, let's see. I'm, I'm planning, uh, before the roads freeze up completely, I wanna apply a little bit more shoulder gravel in certain areas where the road shoulders are either a wet pothole or, um, could use some gravel to shore up the pavement. Cleaning of debris. We do, we now, our sand shed is full of sand. We do have, uh, a small load of salt in the shed, we're, I believe we're in good shape for salt as well. Till we can get in order now, as far as the, the salt goes, um, are you gonna send a letter to, uh, tell them of their award, or how do we?
Yeah, well, um, yeah, let's talk about that after, and we'll figure out reaching out to them and see what they need.
Okay.
Since we've never been business with them before.
They don't.
Exactly, so, some of the other people sent account information to fill out, but they didn't, so, yeah. Between us, we'll figure that out.
All right, and, uh, you know, we've had more rain in the past few weeks than we've had in a
Why, yeah.
two or three of our late summer months, so some of the roads have started to create some potholes and, when my schedule and the weather permits, I'd like to get back out there and try to scoop them up, find scrape, just smooth them up for, for the freeze time. And that's basically all I have for today.
Great, thanks. Okay, moving on to communications. Guy made mention of this before, um, and I think he circulated it, but we got the, the email and then revised email from the supervisory union about what the warrant article was supposed to.
Yeah, from Meg, right?
Say, from Meg, which I assume we're allowed to, uh, you know, she fixed that. I think there was another, uh, there was another typo in it, but I don't know. Will, that's something we'll work into our articles when we start to craft those in December. It should, that should be easy enough to do. Um, that was the only other email that we haven't discussed. And then mail, we have quite a bit of mail. We have a flyer from VLCT about delinquent tax collector training.
I saw that.
We have a letter from Project Feed the Thousands, which is.
How much?
Well, it's not, no, it's, it's just a, it's just a.
An appropriation?
No, it's not an appropriation, it's just a normal fundraising letter.
But I think that's, I think that is their request.
Well, but they don't ask for a specific amount.
Well, that's, I think, because basically that went to the Townsend Food Bank, remember, we had that.
You know, I mean, they, they, it's just, it's a, it's a donation solicitation for different levels, it's not an actual person.
And that's why we didn't do anything with it last.
Correct, because we never actually.
Two people together.
Got a.
Yep.
So it was an actual appropriation request.
I'm sorry, what?
With Senior Solutions?
Yep.
So we have a letter from Winston Proudie, which is a appropriation request.
Is that a new appropriation?
For two hundred and fifty dollars, that's a new appropriation request.
That's new, Winston Proudie. That's a new one.
What's that?
Winston Proudie.
Oh, really?
None of us have time to discuss appropriations right now, I know we're.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
We need to keep, I mean, the thing is, we need to log all of the ones that we got, and then we will go through the list and discuss what we're gonna do, but, um, I just wanna make sure we need to, I need to keep those separated for the file that Sarah is keeping on the requests, so it doesn't get lost in other mail. I'm writing on them also. Then we have a letter from The Current, which is another appropriation request.
We, I didn't know, they didn't have that before.
Yeah, The Current, yeah.
Yeah, The Current, yeah, so that's, it's a request for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for The Current.
Oh, I have to bring your line home, okay.
Does The Current come to Brooklyn?
What surprise?
I've seen that New Haven.
Just don't have a.
This is not an appropriation request.
When it came to Brooklyn.
Then we have, we have an appropriation request from Youth Services. Yeah, for two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and that is already marked as an appropriation request.
So this is new, huh, what's the problem?
We have, that is a new one, yeah. We have a letter from Senior Solutions, which is an appropriation request. Six hundred and fifty dollars.
How often does The Current come up here, you know?
I've, I think, I've only seen him once. Well, I think that's, that's, that's probably because somebody requested them to be here.
Like the Medicaid?
Yes.
Yeah, something. Medicaid, you can get Medicaid, you can, Medicaid can help on paper wise. But I think it's, but doesn't New Haven not wanna stop? They don't wanna bus stop, I mean, New Haven's a lot of buses stopping in New Haven, 'cause they don't want, there's something with New Haven buses, which I think is why we don't have like a bus that really comes up this way, because that would be the natural.
Which.
Right?
I don't know.
There's a letter from Vermont Rural Water Association, which is, basically, I think, uh, is not really something we need to be concerned with. I think it's based on the PFAS water tests that Nancy Burke has already pulled.
What's that?
Additional information about if we need more information about the PFAS water sampling that the state required, but Nancy's already done that. This is just a more information about it if we were doing it ourselves perhaps. We have a letter from the Wyndham County Sheriff letting us know about their rates for policing services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, which look like fifty-two dollars an hour. We have a letter from Grace Cottage, which is an appropriation request.
We got. Five, so three hundred?
Three hundred dollars. Um, we have something that I don't know if it came in the non-voce or not, but about our contact information for Green Up Day.
I, I think it came in a letter, or Sarah wasn't sure.
I will fill this out and send it back to them. Just a slight heads up, this will be my last year doing Green Up Day, I will not be doing it, so it'll be part of my work this year, we'll be trying to find someone else to do it, it's a lot of work. And we have something from Comcast about how awesome the internet is or something, I'm not really sure what this is.
It's a, it's a program for, um, low-income children in regards to getting, um, computers and broadband access.
All right, some information about that.
So we'll pass this anyway. For now.
Uh, yeah.
I think Comcast is true.
Even Comcast.
They wanna ban anyone.
They're probably younger.
Oh, God.
Okay, and we'll, uh, pass around the warrants.
Are we gonna consider the sheriff again?
That was just the information.
That's just an informational thing, letting us know what their rates are for next fiscal year in case we were somewhat budgeted for them. We aren't, but. And then the payroll, just note, the payroll warrants does not need to be signed, it just needs to be voted, I came in and signed it last week. Just ahead of run it, so. And then, can I get back all of the, in particular, the ones that say appropriation request, I just wanna make sure that I keep those. We have a file, yeah, we have a separate file. Thank you.
Well, they're, I mean, they're not separated.
Oh, come on. Some of them facing the wrong way.
What's going on? He's right in the middle. He has to pass it both directions.
Come on. A little bit of effort.
That's because you stopped asking them. You just looked at them every time.
Okay, while those are going around, just to talk a little bit about agenda for next time, we'll continue our budget discussion. Oh, the folks from the Green Mountain Conservancy, Deb Luskin and Sam, I forget Sam's last name at the moment, are going to come. They'll be at the front of the agenda for ten minutes or so to just talk about the acquisitions that the organization is doing, and, because some of them include property in Brookline.
That makes sense.
No, no. Well, just say Deb and Sam from the town.
Dave, do I need to add to the agenda if I wanted to, more to consider putting a building commissioner on to the list of people like dog catcher and I don't know, the road commissioner and, and health officer and all these other guys?
Well, we've, we have, we have not yet established a position of building commissioner.
That's what I'm saying. Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't we do that? Should I, should I make out a proposal, or should I do that?
We could put it back on the agenda to, yeah, I mean, we, you had that draft whenever it was, and we started to discuss it.
Yeah.
And, to be honest, I can't remember exactly.
I think I have it at home.
We did.
And, and the thing that was brought up, and it was a good point, was to have it, have a, have a salary. I never wanted to do that, but the point is, well, man, if I die of stroke tomorrow, plus I'm not it, and I drive a stroke tomorrow or whatever, if somebody takes over that position, it should always be attractive so somebody could do it. I don't, that was, that was Dot's argument.
Right, I mean, I think, I think, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't discuss it too much right now, but we can put it on the agenda to discuss, was that I think my, my recollection is, my thinking at the time was, we needed to figure out, A, if we wanted to establish that position, and define what the position was, and have a description for it, if we wanna have a description. Separate to that was a discussion of whether there should be any stipend for it.
Because?
But it was, I had to decide on establishing it first, I think.
Right, as of 2014, we had these two, two buildings, and they need attention, and you see that. Before that, we just have basically around Schoolhouse, which we don't really do anything with, and the town clerk basically watches this, Toby, and if they don't, and if he doesn't, Gwen will get on his face and.
Oh, no, he's a boss.
Well, I mean, I think we could, I think we could put it back, we could put it on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda for next time to just.
Discuss it.
Restart the discussion and get back to where we were, because I'm not sure.
Because it's gonna be part of this, now's the time to get into it.
If I remember correctly, we did, like, because we were, we were busy, but I agree that, that it should be something that we should.
Consider the topic.
Especially in light of what just happened with the heat.
Possibly establishing a building.
Because just a, just a hot line of contact that they call on.
We were supposed to cry live about during the war. If that didn't happen, we'd have frozen lives. We don't need that.
So, so we have budget discussion, the folks in the Green Mountain Conservancy we put on to discuss building commissioner. I'm gonna put on just a brief discussion of the town report. Cause I need to.
I have signs.
Figure it out. And anything else anyone can think of for the agenda for next month? I'll put on at least a brief thing to discuss anything that might have, the influx of bids that you will have got.
I like your positive wording. If you have a bunch of this, you're gonna have somebody.
Sorry, Mark, what were you, you were sort of saying?
Oh, I was just gonna give you a little upgrade on the roadside mow, tractor rental.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrants 2020-18 dated 10/29/19 in the amount of $3,791.12. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor approving Payroll Warrants 2020-18 dated October 29th, 2019 in the amount of $3,791.12, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That's approved. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrants 2020-17 dated November 5th, 2019 in the amount of $7,749.95. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce again. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrants 2020-17 dated November 5th, 2019 in the amount of $7,749.95, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Right, please, a both pass. All right, we talked about our agenda, then I think we're good. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Movement to adjourn by Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shelby. All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, and we will call it 8:26.